Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, July 8th, 2025, meeting of the Ashland Zoning Board of Appeals. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast live by WACA TV and livestreamed on Facebook. Remote participation is available using the Zoom video conferencing platform for convenience only. Any disruption with the video conferencing platform will result in the platform being shut down. However, the meeting will continue. Meetings will continue to be broadcast in WACA TV and livestreamed on Facebook. And to participate remotely from a computer, there's a link included in the posted agenda and also a telephone number that you can call to access the meeting via telephone. First item on the agenda is to call the meeting to order. I, John Trefethan, am present.
Hi, Brian Forrestallan, present.
Hi, Daniel May, and present.
Hi, Stuart Siegel, I'm present on Zoom.
Hi, Ryan Sullivan, and present.
Excellent. We are all here. Going on to the second item on the agenda, continuance of a public hearing on the 40B comprehensive permit request for 61 Waverly Street. The Ashland Zoning Board of Appeals will reopen the public hearing to hear the petition from the Gutierrez Company requesting a comprehensive permit per Mass. General Law, Chapter 40B, Sections 20-23, to allow for the development of one multifamily five-story building containing 226 apartment units and 391 parking spaces. The property in question is located at 61 Waverly Street, Assessors Map 15, Lot 12, in the Ashland WMUSD, quote, capital D, unquote, Wildwood Mixed Use Special District, quote, D, close quote, zoning. Previous public meetings on this matter have been held on March 25th, April 22nd, May 27th, June 10th, and June 24th, and we are back here tonight on July 8th. When we were last here, there were some issues involving traffic, I believe, that were remain to be decided, and I believe the applicant was going to look at possibly redesigning one of the exits onto Waverly Street, et cetera. I see. I no longer see Mr. Michaud as our traffic. Oh, there he is.
I am here, Chair.
You were in the lower-left corner, Bob. Before we start, was there anything you wanted to talk about at the beginning?
No. So, I am in receipt of the updated site plans, Chair, as they've been updated through and including today. And I believe that the applicant has submitted that same material to the town for the record. And when the appropriate time comes, I could walk you through our review of that submitted material. I don't have anything written. Everything kind of came together in a very expeditious way, given the holiday. It really only gave me a day to look everything over and then also, having been in receipt of materials just submitted today, wanted to make sure I had a comprehensive collection of submitted material before I put pen to paper. But I am certainly able to walk through my commentary on those materials when the appropriate time comes.
Well, you're ahead of us because none of us on the CBA have seen the new plan. And perhaps this would be a good time to ask the applicant to either distribute the plan or lead us through it on the screen so we have an idea about exactly what they've done or proposing to do, and then we can ask you for your comments on that as well. How would that be? Make sense for everybody? Okay.
That does.
Mr. Lopez, why don't we turn it over to you then?
Thank you. Good evening, members of the board. For the record, Mizrau Lopez with the applicant, the Gutierrez Company. And we have made a number of updates to the plan based on the conversation and the comments that were made at the last hearing. The headline, and I'll let Will Park from SMMA, our engineer, come up and just walk everyone through the plan and just point out the changes to the plan, but the headline is that we were able to modify the entrance on Waverly Street in order to allow a more traditional exit from the property, if you will, by both the Ashland apparatus and the Framingham apparatus. And part of the timing and the reason why some of this came together late today is because we were finally able to confirm, we had been making an assumption about the vehicle that Framingham Fire Department uses, and we had been in conversation with the department and finally got confirmation that the assumption that we had been carrying within our plans was accurate, but we didn't want to send the final set to the town until we had that confirmation. So, we do have that. We did submit a memo that includes 10 or so items that were lists that I compiled from notes during our last hearing. So, we responded to the open items that were discussed at the last hearing. I'm happy to go through those as well tonight. But I'll let Will Park just run through the couple of exhibits where we made the changes to the plan and just walk the board through the modifications.
Before we do that, I just want to clarify. You mentioned you had 10 or 12 comments or whatever. Have those been submitted to us for us to review?
So, they were, yes, we submitted those today to the board.
Okay. I just wanted to be clarified because, again, we're proceeding sort of blind on this, so not how I prefer to proceed, but I understand timing and holiday weekend and everything else. So, I just wanted to be clear because a lot of paperwork, a lot of different dates, and I didn't see anything that referenced that. Okay.
Correct. And I apologize for that. We had shared the memo and a plan set with Mr. Michaud and also with Hancock so that they could review the updated plans. We had shared that last week, but with the holiday and then wanting to confirm that the information that we had was accurate, we had, we decided to hold off sending it to the board until we can confirm that. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Will Park from SMMA.
Thank you. As Israel mentioned, we heard the town and the both peer reviewers' recommendations to take another look at the driveway geometry and layout to accommodate a traditional outbound exit of fire apparatus onto Waverly Street. The first thing we did, I believe Mr. Michaud recommended this, the inbound and outbound lanes were 12 feet wide each. They are now 14 feet wide on the inbound lane and 16 feet wide on the outbound lane, which was Bob's recommendation. In addition, the curb radii on the outsides were increased from 15-foot radii to 20-foot radii to allow more smooth entrance of the vehicles and exit. Could you please go forward two pages? You could just zoom into like the same area again, please. Perfect. Thank you so much. So, as Israel mentioned, we submitted two truck turning or auto turn exhibits showing the two fire trucks that were mentioned at the last meeting. One is the Framingham truck, which Israel mentioned. We had some back and forth with their fire department to confirm our assumptions were correct. And then the second looks very familiar or similar to the first exhibit, but it is the Ashland fire apparatus, which we also confirmed with the fire department. Those two vehicles are the Pierce Arrow XT or the Pierce Ascendant, both roughly 40 feet or 41 feet in length and similar turning radii, but we labeled these very clearly which town we had modeled in the various exhibits. As you can see, they can enter and exit to eastbound or westbound, and there's another, I won't ask them to pan around this exhibit, but there's another inset that shows them, you know, taking, exiting to the left or entering from the right. So, we've covered all the bases, including showing it successfully navigating throughout the internal circulation. I will just say, while this viewport is open, one of the 10 comments in the response letter that Israel mentioned was dedicated short-term parking, which could be seen on this screen here. The spaces on the bottom of the viewport, that kind of abut the front entrance, now have signage for short-term vehicles, food delivery, Uber rides, et cetera. And then the eight spaces across the drive aisle from those handicap spaces have signage for visitor parking. So, we've, we heard that comment and have provided signage to allocate spaces to those vehicles that we anticipate using the site. Any questions on the fire apparatus or turning movements?
There was talk at the last meeting about a telephone pole that was in the way, and what happened to that?
The pole is still there. Thank you for highlighting that. We were able to resolve that by widening from 12 feet to 16 feet. It just gave everything a little bit more room to breathe.
Okay. So, is the pole in between the two lanes?
Yes, sir. It's in the middle of the island.
Okay. Understood. Any board members, any questions on this particular screen before we?
I don't have any questions. I just want to hear how MDM feels about the new layout.
Yep. Fair enough.
Yeah, not at this time.
You know what? Why don't we, and Bob, is this a good time for you to chime in with your thoughts, recognizing that some of these are very new?
Yes. Yes, thank you, Chair. Again, for the record, Robert Michaud, Managing Principal of MDM Transportation Consultants. So, we have taken a look at this plan. We appreciate the more traditional design. It's much more in line with what we had initially suggested. We do have some minor commentary on some of the geometry that would be easily implementable by the client, by the proponent, rather. And it really has to do with the curb radii and making sure that as vehicles are coming into the driveway at speed and decelerating to make these movements, that they have a comfortable way to decelerate and comfortably make those turns. The curb radii that are currently shown are approximately 20 feet. We would suggest particularly for the inbound lane radius that that be increased to a 30-foot curb radius. You'll see that the wheel tracking on this fire apparatus very precisely takes up all of that 14 feet of width. In fact, you'd have to make a fairly perfect turn to be able to exactly fit within that 14 feet. So, the increase in radius will allow the vehicle to make a turn closer to the roadway edge rather than more central to the roadway. And while 14 feet is minimally acceptable, we would advise just bumping that to 16 feet, which is, I think, very easily achieved within the confines of the island that they're showing. On the outbound side, you'll notice that there's a very slight encroachment of the vehicle turning right. That is an acceptable standard in our experience, but that can be improved as well by increasing that 20-foot curb radius to a 25-foot curb radius. We've tested that in the office and find that that's a much more comfortable geometry to be able to make that maneuver without any potential encroachment over the center line of the road. That same finding holds true for the service or move-in type vehicles that might be accessing the site, say a SU-30 vehicle, which they've also modeled. I think in a subsequent sheet to this set, there's this single-unit box-type truck that is shown to make these same maneuvers. That design vehicle can make those maneuvers reasonably based on the geometry that's shown, but again, with the slight adjustment of the geometry here, we think that would be a much more comfortable experience for folks who would be moving in or moving out. So, that's the extent of the commentary that we have there. So, very minor adjustments. I think the applicant's done a nice job at enhancing the geometry here to a point where it's much more traditional. And I also concur with the alignment of the island. It allows the applicant to work around that pole and to provide curbing and other features that would protect the pole once the facility is open.
Any questions on the board for Mr. Michaud?
No.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Stu.
On this diagram here, if the fire apparatus were to make a left turn out by the pole to go back to the fire station, is there any problem making a left turn?
So, that would represent a return to the Ashland Fire Station? That's really what your question?
My question is, will the fire apparatus be able to make a left turn at that location going westbound on Waverly Street?
Yeah, I think Will has this exhibit on the screen, which I believe represents the movement, Mr. Siegel, that you're asking about.
Any problems with that?
No. The maneuver, as it's shown on the auto turn exhibit, clearly demonstrates the ability for that left turn to occur appropriately within the paved area of Waverly Street.
Thank you.
Okay. No other questions from the board? Why don't we continue on? We'll have public comment at the conclusion of the night's presentation by the applicant on all issues rather than breaking it up, I think, would be ideal.
Could I just chime in to respond to Bob's comments? Thank you, Bob, for your thorough and quick review of these documents that you received. We have heard the recommendations to further increase the radii and the width of the inbound lane, and, you know, we've looked at this a lot lately, and I can say confidently that all of these can be implemented to further improve these turning movements. So, no concerns.
Good. Glad to hear that. Okay. Anything further that the applicant would like to talk about? Either on this or any of those mysterious 10 or 12 points?
Yes, Mr. Chair. So, I just, I could highlight the points that were outlined in the memo, and again, these were a compilation of comments received from MDM in their prior traffic review memo and then also responding to a couple of the comments that we heard during public comment at the last hearing that we, you know, wanted to respond to. So, the first, just in no particular order, just in the order really that they appeared in the MDM prior memo, was the conversation around the parking ratio, and we just wanted to elaborate a little bit more on our rationale for maintaining the parking ratio at roughly the 1.7, 1.73, to be exact, spaces per unit, which again is a smaller or lesser amount than what's required by the bylaw, but we're trying again to strike a balance between not paving too much and also having enough inadequate space for all of the visitor parking, the various short-term parking that we mentioned earlier. One of the other considerations that we highlighted is the need, well, is the fact that Ashland is, has adopted the specialized code, which requires a fair number of parking spaces to be for electric vehicles. And obviously, we wouldn't want to utilize any of those spaces for snow storage. So, you know, it just further stresses the need to have adequate amount of parking, even if it's at times a little bit underutilized, but certainly will need to be utilized during snow events and for EV charging. So, that's really just the first response to the first question. The second one in the memo is with respect to some of the traffic demand monitoring measures, and we've really incorporated and adopted, I think, almost all of the comments and requests by MDM. We are agreeing to provide a subsidy for the affordable units, for train passes, for tenants that sign a new lease. So, that was one of the recommendations. And the other one was to designate the short-term parking spaces so that those spaces are accounted for, and we showed you where those spaces were going to be located on the plan. Those are the spaces that are right in front of the building. So, we just wanted to make that more clear on the plan. The one point that we'd like to reserve is the unbundling of the parking, and we just provided a little bit of an explanation for why we'd like that really to be more of a management decision, a property management decision, to manage whether you unbundle the parking spaces. When you unbundle the spaces, you have to sort of itemize, here's how much you pay for rent, here's how much you pay for your parking space, and that can create challenges with just managing the property. Some people may not always indicate that they have a car, and then you have to monitor that and go through and tick and tie license plates to, you know, who's actually paying for parking and can create just some management challenges that we think are better dealt with from a property management standpoint rather than, you know, just baking something rigid into a comprehensive permit. So, we just wanted to elaborate on that point. Many of these other points in the memo are ones that we've talked about that just have to do with the fact that we modified the entrance along the Waverly Street side and demonstrating that that geometry works. So, a number of the items in the memo, we've kind of covered just through talking about the modifications to the driveway entrance. And I believe the only other comment, we added the site triangles to the plan. Thank you, Will. We added the site triangles to the plan and also added a note that was requested by MDM to just make sure that those site triangles remain clear of any accumulated snow, to make sure also that there's no vegetation that obstructs that sight line onto Waverly. So, just again, you know, kind of minor details, but, you know, making sure that we're picking up all of the comments that were presented. And then lastly, there was a comment at the last hearing about whether we could restrict vehicles from making a right-hand turn on East Union during the morning peak hour to try and alleviate some of the potential congestion with school traffic. And so, we looked at that, discussed it with our traffic engineer, and we think we can make that accommodation. So, we would install signage just limiting right turns out onto East Union Street during that morning peak hour. So, those were all of the items that are included in that, in the memo. Again, many of them were discussed at the last hearing or all of them were discussed at the last hearing, and happy to answer any questions or elaborate.
Bob, any comment at this point on any of that?
Sure. I'll just give a recap, starting with parking supply, the parking ratio. ratio. Um, I'm now aware of the strategy that the applicant has to reserve 40 parking spaces for um, areas in which snow could be stored. Um, if that were the case, and you assume that those spaces would, at least during winter months, not really be regularly available, um, the effective parking ratio would be much more in line with what my suggestion to the board was, uh, which was one, 1.5 parking spaces per unit. In fact, I think the actual effective ratio would, would be 1.55 per unit. So that's right in line with what we think is practical and what's typically provided for projects like this. Um, for uh, projects of this type, it's, it's common to have snow storage outside of the paved area, so to speak, and vegetated areas, but the unique characteristics of this particular site obligate the, the need to, to have that snow storage occur within these designated parking spaces. So understanding that, I think the effective parking ratio is, is appropriate. Um, and I don't have any comment beyond that. I, I did suggest uh, in earlier commentary that uh, perhaps it could be a banking of parking spaces, but I, I did not understand at that time that those spaces would be reserved for snow storage purposes. Um, as it relates to transportation demand management, uh, we're pleased to see that the applicant has committed to virtually almost all of the suggested actions that we outlined. Um, and uh, as it relates to unbundling of parking, um, I'll defer to the board's position on whether it's appropriate um, to unbundle parking for the site, but I will point out that typically unbundling of parking is most effective when it involves a parking structure. Uh, if you look at other 40Bs, including those um, in Ashland, uh, many of them, in fact, most of them, uh, actually have structured parking where it's easier to um, different, differentiate or assign parking or um, or assign a separate cost to parking. So in the context of this particular site where all of the surface, well, um, all but a, a, a small number of garage spaces are provided, um, you know, I'll, I'll defer to the board on your opinion as to whether or not unbundling in this particular case uh, is appropriate. Um, and uh, as it relates to the access and circulation, we talked about that, very minor suggested changes there. Um, and finally, as it relates to the restriction of the left turn on East Union Street, um, I think that's appropriate. I think that signing could be certainly placed that encourages that. Uh, there really aren't any effective ways to physically prevent a left turn from occurring during those particular school hours, but as a practical matter, um, to the extent things are really busy with the high school um, traffic, uh, as a practical matter, I don't think many people would desire to make a left turn there. Um, and there is certainly um, the ability to use Waverly Street more directly because of the changes in access that are now part of the plan. So I think what the applicant is proposing by way of left, left turn restriction with a sign is appropriate and reasonable. And I think that covered uh, all of our remaining points.
Thank you. Um, any questions from the board for either Bob or the applicant on this matter?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, Stu.
I think, I, I think Mr. Michaud has clarified it in his last statement, but I thought I heard the representative say he was gonna restrict a right-hand turn onto East Union Street. And I think he meant left-hand turn, correct? Just for the record, 'cause it's in the record, he said um, right-hand turn.
Through you, Mr. Chair, that's, that is, that is correct. And I was actually going to correct my statement um, after Mr. Michaud finished his remarks.
Stu did it for you, so that's good.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, John, I just had a quick comment regarding the peak hours. Uh, I just wanted to make sure those peak hours would be defined by um, you know, the appropriate department within Ashland. I think defining those hours is important and, you know, getting those off by a few hours could lead to uh, some issues. So I don't know what, what department that would be, but um, again, I, I think that would be uh, important and uh, you know, resolve any issues regarding the peak hours. Um, and then regarding the unbundled parking, I don't have a big issue with that, but I'd like to understand what the incentive for the T-passes, subsidized T-passes would be, um, just to make sure, you know, it really is incentivizing uh, residents to uh, possibly engage in that.
Uh, sure. So again, through you, Mr. Chair, uh, with respect to the peak hours, I think the way that uh, that would work is uh, our traffic engineer conducted um, actual traffic counts to determine when exactly, when the peak hour occurs. And so it would be, and obviously they, you know, noted the time uh, that the school is open and when buses start arriving, but it's really based on the hard data that was collected as to when the maximum number of cars actually, you know, cross through that intersection. And, and I believe that the time is documented in, in our traffic study. I believe it's somewhere between 7:00 and 8:00 AM is when that peak time occurs, but it would be driven by that, um, by the actual, you know, hard data.
Yeah.
Mr. Michaud wants to comment on that, um?
And I, I think that's fine as long as there's data to support that.
Yes.
Yep.
Uh, and then with respect to the second part of your question around the subsidies, it would be just strictly based on, um, if you qualify for an affordable housing unit, then you would automatically be provided with a subsidy for uh, one month, um, when you sign a one, a one-year lease. So it's pretty straightforward.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Um... Mr. Chairman, I do have one question following up on the subsidy.
Sure, I'm sorry, Ryan.
Yeah, not a problem. Um, so, I mean, as I understand the, the, excuse me, the purpose of the subsidy isn't necessarily to, I mean, it's to, to encourage people to use public transportation so that we're limiting the number of uh, ins and outs and traffic added uh, to the Ashland roads generally. Why would we only offer that to affordable units? Um, as I understand it, you know, if, if you're a new tenant, uh, and you, you might not be accustomed to commuting uh, via the T from this location, uh, getting that free month uh, might encourage you to give it a try and, you know, you'll, you'll leave your, your car parked um, at the, at the property. Is that something you, you would consider or is that uh, too cost prohibitive? What's the concern there?
Uh, so through you, Mr. Chair, it is, um, it's really just, it, it is a balance uh, between trying to provide incentives um, to encourage uh, transportation use and also wanting to allow management to also manage the property, you know, effectively. Um, from a competitive standpoint, um, to the extent that that's what the marketplace is doing, I'm sure that that's something that management, you know, may very well in fact, uh, provide and, and could even go beyond what we're even talking about here, but we just feel that's something that uh, is best kind of dealt with uh, and addressed by, by management um, at the time.
Thank you.
Yes. Um, just, so you're gonna give um, affordable housing tenants a pass for the T for one month?
It's a subsidy towards their, towards the, the pass.
Okay. So they still have to get in their car and drive down to the train station?
Yes.
So it's not gonna help any of the traffic issues per se?
That in and of itself, um, well, it's an incentive, uh, but again, that's part of a much larger package of other measures um, that we've outlined in the proposal, which uh, go to, um, you know, providing ride share programs, car pooling, um, you know, so, so it, it's really part of a larger program, if you will, um, which could involve, you know, multi uh, passenger, you know, van drops.
Shuttle bus.
Shuttle bus to the MBTA, so...
That's where I was going with that. Is there a, somewhere in the plan, a shuttle bus from this 200?
Correct.
Units over to the, 'cause that would help with traffic.
Correct. And one of the things that we've um, outlined is baking that specific function for a travel, for a traffic coordinator um, to address all of those, kind of the myriad of ways that you can encourage public transportation use and reduce, you know, having everyone individually get in their car and go to the MBTA station.
So that's not a condition, right? That's just something that you hope the management company will do or, 'cause you guys aren't managing it, right?
Well, we may or we, we may not um, manage it, but it is uh, included in the list of traffic demand monitoring uh, measures that we are agreeing to as part of uh, the recommendations that have been put forth by Mr. Michaud.
Very good.
Thank you.
Anything else you folks want to present to us tonight on the parking or engineering aspect of project?
Uh, that's all we have for, for tonight.
Okay, um, before we open it up for further questions from the public, um, I had a question and this wasn't really on the agenda as far as what we were gonna talk about tonight, but in reviewing some of the documents that have been filed uh, in this matter, going way back to March 25th, when this got underway, there was a letter from the cons, Office of Conservation uh, signed by four of the members of the Conservation Commission, talking about differences between the town bylaws when it comes to wetlands and stormwater and state. And I note in your request recently filed back in June for waivers, there was a reference that you're asking the town, us to waive the local ordinance, but you're gonna go ahead and comply with the state ordinance and require, measure, use the stricter measurement that's required by the town as opposed to the state. And in reviewing all of that, I also noted that they made a, a comment when, with respect to the, the wetlands that exist on the property, that the wetland, I guess delineation you call it, was made last year at the end of a rather significant drought period and suggesting that it be done again now that we're back in perhaps more, more common times. And has that been done?
Uh, it has not been done, but we did uh, respond, uh, we did provide a thorough response to that particular question uh, in our, in a memo that we submitted to the conservation or to the board um, in response to that uh, list of questions from the conservation agent. And uh, the, to paraphrase, you know, the response on, on that particular question, the wetland markers that were used uh, in order to delineate the site, uh, so first of all, the site was delineated by a professional uh, wetland scientist and what they explained was that the markers that they use are not just the water table, but rather, uh, in addition to the water table, all of the other features, wetland plants, hydrology of the soil, uh, to determine whether a wetland exists or not. So oftentimes, you'll have uh, you know, a water table that will indicate one thing, but then the soils become hydric over time and they're very clearly uh, wetland soils or not wetland soils. And then similarly, you'll have vegetation that will be indicative of, of uh, wetland uh, conditions or not. So uh, they're very confident, um, and this is a very experienced uh, wetland scientist that performed the delineation, that um, that the delineation is, is accurate. Uh, so uh, so they did not recommend uh, for the delineation to be redone at this time, but certainly when we file with the Conservation Commission, um, to the extent that the commission wants to have the wetland line peer reviewed, um, we, we expect that to be the case and quite honestly, we would not be putting forth a design that we felt that where that wetland line would be questionable, 'cause it could obviously have a meaningful impact on, on our project. So um, we, we expect that, that review will be, you know, very thorough and, and part of the Conservation Commission process.
Okay, thank you. And I guess one final thing before we open it up for questions, let me ask our peer reviewer for Hancock, the, in your June, I think it was June 24th report, you basically had sort of signed off, if I can use that term, on everything. Have any of the plans recently that have been talked about tonight, does that change your findings and, or conclusion in any way?
Uh, no, it does not. Um, everything they discussed here were um, something that was uh, outside of the scope of the final comments and none of them adversely affect any of the drainage or the grading that we discussed previously.
Okay, thank you. Um, that being said, why don't we open it up for public comment? Um, if you're one of the two people in attendance and wanna talk, please line up at the wall. And anybody who wants to uh, online talk, um, please raise your hand and Jasmine will allow you into the meeting. Yes, sir?
Arthur Johnson, Fort Roberts Road. Um, talking about the telephone pole in the island, it just seems, I don't know how steep that driveway is gonna be, especially during the winter, if it's icy, you got a heavy fire truck coming down. And these, Mr. Michaud said it's almost a perfect, you know, fit to make that turn. So if it's sliding or coming in, it seems like we're setting ourselves up to, someone's gonna knock the pole down. So I don't know, it seems like that pole, I'd like to see it moved out of the way because uh, how many, all these cars coming in and out of there, it's gonna be tough not to hit it. Um, one other thing on the monitoring of, Mr. Michaud said, I think, at the last meeting or the meeting before about monitoring crash trends post occupancy. So it, it seems like, what will they do after the, if there's more crashes after all this is said and done, what are they, what will be done? You know, how can they change anything once everything's done? So, there's no sidewalks, you know, on Waverly Street. I don't think there's any plans to vary, you know, anyone to build them. They want people to walk and take bicycles. It's a very dangerous stretch of road there, so, and putting up a sign, no right turn, it's not gonna work too well for some people. So I'd like to see that pole moved, just to get it out of the way.
Okay, thank you. Jasmine, anybody online that wants to speak?
Ms. Flaherty.
Okay. Mr. Flaherty, if you, you're, I think, here, if you could just identify yourself. I'm Ms. Flaherty, I'm sorry.
Well, it is, this is Paul Flaherty, uh, daughter is my wife. Um, and we would just like to comment uh, also on the uh, entrance from Waverly Street. And over the course of the planning of this and the meetings, it has changed from an entrance only to an exit, and now the exit has been reconfigured, I understand, for emergency vehicles. But going through, it seems as though everything is being driven by the location of the telephone pole that is existing. And the e- exit right now, we, we're the owners of 63 Waverly Street, and that exit is very close to our property line and our driveway. And I feel as though it'll be almost impossible for anyone to leave our driveway while there's traffic coming out of that exit onto Waverly Street. Seems as though moving the utility pole might be the best answer for everyone involved. And we would like to have a little bit of space there so that we're not getting crashes at the end of our driveway trying to pull out onto Waverly Street.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Thank you, Ms. Flaherty.
Thank you. Mark Asoni, 119 Main Street. I have about two or three brief questions. Is, once there's those two turns at the end of the road on Waverly Street, has there been any discussion to put in streetlights down there?
I'm sorry, I didn't quite get the question.
Can there be, has there been any discussions for the turns coming out of Waverly Street, for the oncoming traffic either side of Waverly Street? Can there be a traffic light to queue for the turns? Has there been any discussion about that?
There hasn't been any discussion about that. I believe putting a traffic light is a state decision.
Oh, traffic light, yes.
And would require much, much effort. And given the way traffic light requests have been dealt with in Ashland by the state previously, I suspect it would be a very difficult, if not impossible, turn. And I will recognize Mr. Lopez, who was nicely raising his hand to get me out of the problem I was getting myself into.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We did conduct a warrant analysis that was suggested by MDM Transportation to look at the volumes turning in and out of that Waverly Street entrance, and they did not meet the requirements for a signal there. So we did look at that.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for that. And my last two was going to be brief? That I know that, I came to the office here, to the Town Hall last week, and I had Rebecca Solomon make copies for the Board for my questions. I just wanted to have the Board got those in their packets.
We did receive it this evening, Mark, yes.
Okay. On the, on the, on that top paragraph is the last two questions. And you answered one about the Conservation, which, thank you for doing that, and hopefully the, hopefully there's going to be a peer review and conversation, Conservation talks about everything together with the applicants. And the last one is, is all, is it all set with local needs of this town, once it is being established that it is going to be an entity in this town?
I'm sorry, the question again was?
Is Ashland all set with all consistent local needs, when this is going to be finally done and?
Well, as far as 40B would be concerned, if the two projects, the Main Street, 10-60 Main Street, and this one are approved, and once building permits are pulled for, on each of those, I do believe Ashland would be over the 10% limit, and we would have safe harbor.
Okay. What you do have in your package, rather distribute, I won't go into, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Any other questions, Jasmine? Okay, we've closed public comment for tonight on this matter. Why don't we talk about where we're going to go from, from here? If you step back up to the mic, Mr. Lopez. We need water and sewer peer review on this project, I believe, to ensure that there's going to be adequate water and sewer, and particularly sewer capabilities in this area. We've reached out to our normal peer reviewer and are waiting to hear back, but it's Haley Ward and the engineer we use regularly here in Ashland for peer review. It is highly unlikely that we would have a report done in time to talk about it at our next meeting, scheduled meeting, which would be June, I'm sorry, July 22nd. And the question comes up, unless there's something else that we can make good progress on, on July 22nd, it may make more sense to continue this to August 12th, to give us an opportunity to have the peer review done. By then, obviously, the Board would have a full opportunity to review the written responses that were filed today. And perhaps, this has been just me talking off the top of my head without consulting with counsel or my fellow Board members, but also perhaps start to go over some of the request for waivers that you recently filed, a new request, or supplemental request replacing the one that was filed at the very beginning of the, the project. So does that make sense, or what would you prefer?
Would it, just looking at the calendar and looking at the timeframe that the Board, the 180-day period that the Board has to deliberate on this, I believe that period is up in the end, towards the end of August. I'm not sure of the exact date, but I believe it's in August towards the end. So this would put us close to that, and I would just hope that we can receive the peer review letter from Haley Ward in time for us to be in a position to respond to it and provide our comments back to the Board by that August 12th timeframe.
That would be, that would be my expectation, if we continued it out for two meetings as opposed to just the next meeting.
Would it be possible to talk about the waivers that we've requested at the next hearing, and then maybe at least try and address that rather than wait until the August 12th meeting?
That's certainly something we could talk about, if you'd prefer to do that. We can do that. We can also talk about any questions the Board has from what's been submitted today and continue to make progress. Counsel, any thoughts on the matter?
So the application was filed March 25th? Is that correct? Okay, so that would be September 21st.
Oh, September, September.
Okay. So we, we do have a little bit more time than it appeared. That doesn't mean I want to waste it. And so if the Board thinks it would be in a position to discuss some of the new materials, the new waivers list on the 22nd, then that's up to the, the Board. I know you have the 1060 Main on that night as well, so you'll still have a substantive public hearing on the other one on the same night. But if you feel you have the bandwidth to do both, certainly no objection here. I, I do think it's going to take a little bit to get Haley Ward's comments probably, and then get them over to the developer's team and give them a fair opportunity to respond and be prepared to discuss it. So I don't think it's realistic that that's going to happen by the 22nd. So shooting for the August 12th date is probably practical target for that component.
Well, I would like to continue to make progress if there's something we can make progress on. And Board members, do you think we're ready to start talking about some of the waiver requests? Because there are a number of them. Many of them we have had evidence introduced on, on it. Others have not had evidence yet, and we're premature to talk about those. Again, making progress is always a good thing, but I don't want to have the developer come here and not have any questions really from us or anything from us to talk, for us to talk about with them. Dan?
Yeah, I was curious if the September deadline changes the applicant's stance on pushing out, or do you feel more comfortable?
Well, you know, it would not be the first time that we, that the parties have asked, and the town have had to agree to an extension of time in order to proceed. I would hope if it became necessary, we would, we could do that, but that's not something I want to talk about at this point in time, because we're not close enough to the deadline to really talk about that. But Mr. Lopez strikes me as a very reasonable person and has been very responsive to our requests in the past, so hopefully that would continue. And again, I don't, you don't need to respond to that.
If I may, if, if we already have Main Street on for the 22nd, it doesn't need.
On the 22nd, at this point in time, we have a special permit request for Pleasant Street project that we've continued several times and continued it, no further continuances to then. We also will have a, I forget if it's a special permit or variance, from the developer of the new Metro West YMCA site, that is on for the 22nd, as well as the 10-60 Main Street. So my recommendation to the Board would be to pack an overnight bag, because we will be here very late that evening. Unfortunately, or fortunately. Stu, Ryan, your thoughts on the matter?
I, I, my, my only thought is, I, I would prefer to address the waiver request in a, in a single sitting, if we could, unless we think that there's just so many that we wouldn't be able to get through it if it was the only, you know, large substantive meeting at, at whichever date we choose.
Stu, your thoughts?
I agree with Ryan.
Okay. Now, I really think it makes more sense to continue this to the first meeting in August.
That's fine. We're, we're, that, that's fine. We're, we're okay with that.
We can address some of the waiver requests, perhaps, but definitely have the water and sewer, and perhaps something else will come to mind to, to agree with that as well.
That, that's, that's fine. We obviously would like to keep the process moving, but we certainly understand.
I appreciate, I know, I know you're eager to have matters move forward, and we're, we're doing our best on a very busy, busy schedule, which is probably getting even busier. Okay, then how about we continue this to August 12th at 7:00? And if someone wished to make a motion to continue the hearing?
So moved.
And is there a second?
Second the motion.
Aye, John Trefethan, vote in favor.
Aye, Brian Forstall, vote in favor.
Aye, Daniel May, vote in favor.
Aye, Stuart Siegel, vote in favor.
Aye, Ryan Sullivan, vote in favor.
Excellent. Thank you all. Thank you, Mr. Lopez, Mr. Park, and we appreciate it very much. And we thank Mr. Michaud, our traffic peer reviewer, and Rob Benadettis from Hancock, our civil engineer peer reviewer, for participating this evening. We do have a couple of other items on the agenda, which we will get to momentarily. Thank you all. Next item on the agenda is the meeting minutes for June 10th, 2025. Did everybody have an opportunity to review them?
I do not.
Okay. Do you wish to table this until the next meeting? Where hopefully we would have June 10th and also perhaps June 24th finished?
Yes, I move we table this to the next.
And is there a second for that?
Aye, second that.
Aye, John Trefethan, vote in favor.
Aye, Brian Forstall, vote in favor.
Aye, Daniel May, vote in favor.
Aye, Stuart Siegel, vote in favor.
Aye, Ryan Sullivan, vote in favor.
And just to be clear, everybody did receive the June 10th meeting minutes? The only reason why I ask is, I couldn't find my copy today and had them send, the planning department send me another copy, so I wasn't sure whether they had come out initially or not. I didn't see them.
I don't see that I got them.
Okay. I think there was a miscommunication, perhaps, when we got, when Melissa sent out the agenda. I don't think the minutes were included in it, and I didn't notice that until I started focusing on today and what we had on for tonight. So, and again, my bad manners in not introducing that we're joined at the table by our new Director of Planning and Economic Development, Jasmine Farinachi, and our Town Council, Brian Winner. So we got that introduction in before we adjourned, so that's a good thing.
Never.
Ooh, I like that quick. Chairman, you got both our names. Perfectly. That's because, because I wrote them down. Next item is staff updates and administrative matters, and we do have something to report on that. We have a new 40B proposal that was filed today involving 55 West Union Street.
I believe it's 163 units with 180 or 90 parking spaces, and they did just file today, so we've sent it off to review, Brian and Lisa to review, but we did stamp it in with the clerk today, so it does start the clock ticking. From my review, it did appear to be a complete application. So I think everybody is familiar with the site, but if you would like to schedule a site visit, I'd be more than happy to do that. Obviously, you know, we'll reach out after the first meeting to peer review and traffic. But has anybody had a chance to see the state's response to the applicant?
No, I'm not sure. This was, the fact that it had been filed, that was news to me, because the last I had heard was that it was awaiting decision by the State Housing Agency as to whether they could file or not. And apparently, in the documents that were filed, it included the letter from the State Housing Agency that they had authorized it. And nobody in Town Hall or in the CBA seems to have gotten notice of, from the State Housing Agency, that that had been allowed. So there's, there's a problem in communication somewhere, which I suggest we need to straighten out with the state in the event that there are more projects down the road, and they seem to be never ending. Obviously, under the law, we have to fi, have a hearing within 30 days of the date of the filing, I believe. And we should send out to all Town Departments requests for comment. Anything else at this point, Brian, that we should do?
Not at this point, but as you heard, we just received it as well, so we're going to be reviewing that. And if we have any further...
Brian, your mic's on.
Thoughts, comments, or suggestions? We will update the Board accordingly.
Okay. Excellent. Any other updates or administrative matters, Jasmine?
Only that the YMCA will be on for the next hearing, so they have submitted a special permit for that. So that's something that will be on for the 22nd. They will be going to Conservation next Monday, and then to Planning the Thursday after, so.
So they're almost as busy as the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Nearly as busy.
Any questions, thoughts from anybody? I think that concludes the matter, and we have to address this evening at least, so perhaps a motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved. So moved.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Aye, John Trefethan, vote in favor.
Aye, Brian Forstall, vote in favor.
Aye, Daniel May, vote in favor.
Aye, Stuart Siegel, vote in favor.
Aye, Ryan Sullivan, vote in favor.
Okay, thank you all very much. Thank you, WACO, we appreciate it, and good night to everybody.